Well, good evening and thank you for coming out tonight. Can you all hear me okay? Okay. My name is Diana Romero Campbell and I'm running for Southeast Denver City Council here in District 4. I'm running because this is my home. This is the neighborhood that I grew up in. I grew up just across from Bible Park and my family still lives there. And I currently live in Hampton Heights and I've also chosen to raise our family here. I'm a graduate of Thomas Jefferson, but I was just talking to somebody who went to Hamilton together. I was, uh, we went to Hamilton and over, I was best of white men. But, why am I running for city council? I'm running because I think that this is a critical time. I bring the leadership that we need in order to be able to listen to our collective genius to really come up with our Southeast Denver solutions. We know what the issues are. You have been talking to a lot of you and out and knocking doors. We have issues in this city and that is a critical time in our city that we need to be able to listen to one another. We need to be able to work together, but we also need to be able to do a lot of collaboration. And that's the kind of leader that I am. I have spent my entire career, my entire career, I've spent my career in the nonprofit field here in Colorado and in Denver and doing advocacy for children and families and for young people. I currently am the executive director of a nonprofit organization that does outreach for time for kids. And there are things that I have seen, especially right now in our city, that it's a critical time that we really need to think about the people that we have behind the decisions. You might have seen, this is the flyer, the one pager that is in the electronic newsletter. But, there are some critical issues that I'm interested in. Public safety. We know that this is a time in our community that we've seen an increase and I think that our police force needs the supports to be able to respond, to be able to have additional tools like mental health. People who have went out and had mental health, so like the STAR program, that we have the support of our community resource officers and that we are also doing our neighborhood watch program. This is super important and not something that we should back away from, but that we should be really strategic about how we are investing into our police force. And also, there are reforms and there are supports and it doesn't mean that we aren't continuous, doing continuous improvement. What it does mean is that we are investing in our community. In addition to that, I'm also very much invested in how we are addressing homelessness in our community. I've seen an increase over the last couple of years, probably like the, you have, of people who are experiencing homelessness. And how we, you know, lean into the humanity of those who are experiencing homelessness is critically important. We need to make sure that we have support and support for individuals. And we also need to have strategies so that there is supportive housing on there. The city has invested hundreds of millions of dollars into the issue. I think that we need to look at and evaluate and assess duty and are we putting those dollars in the right place and are there other strategies that we need to conserve? Again, bringing people together, how do we solve this issue here in Southeast Denver? A little bit of a side note, when I was at Mile High United Way, did a lot of work with Denver's rural home when I first started. And the number and the data still trends, so you have individuals that you see in cars. But, the majority of our homeless family, our homeless population are those who are living in cars, couch surfing, and their children and their families. And we really need to invest in strategies that are supportive for them. Our parks and open spaces. I grew up across from Bible Park. My dad ran the trail that works today for 50 years. He recently passed away and this is an issue that's near and dear of how do we maintain our access to parks and trails and make it accessible to families? Not only so that they can just wait there, but they can also get to other parks and other places here within Southeast Denver. We were talking earlier about the seniors lunch. I love the seniors lunch. I thought it was a great way to bring people together. And I know Councilwoman Black has really done a lot to engage seniors in this. The seniors lunch. Okay, good. And so there has been a lot to be able to engage our seniors in the community. And I think we need to be able to continue and to do more for them. Again, my mom is 82, I asked her if I could tell her her age, she's 82 years old. And the, the ability for her to age in place with dignity is so important. And what we do, the supports that we put around and access to resources within our city is critically important right now. And I know that for our family, I'm looking at other city resources that we can have to be able to support my community. In much of the same way that I think that it would benefit the residents that we have here in Southeast Denver. The, you know what? I don't, I didn't, we didn't have time. How much anything I use, but I would like to maybe open it up for questions or did you want to hear from Tony?
Well, you've got six minutes so far, so.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
But that's good. If you wanted to start with questions.
Well, I can start with questions.
I remember it's too early in a lot of these conversations.
Sure. And I, so, okay.
Go ahead.
Let's have questions. Are there questions?
Questions, okay.
Here.
We need to raise your voice.
Okay, can you not hear me? I'm sorry.
My, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't closer. Oh, we should have raised our hand earlier. Okay, hi, my name is Diana Romero Campbell. I won't go through a whole thing again. My apologies. Are, do you have any questions?
No, I'm here to go listen.
Thank you. I'm wondering what your thoughts are on group homes and also multiple, multiple housing, multiple family housing units?
Multiple family housing units and group homes. So, I have kids who are in their twenties and they are at a point where they are starting to move, they're getting ready to move out of their house. They cannot afford to live by themselves. They can't afford to buy a home. Affordability in our city is at a crisis point, right? And we need to be able to have affordable housing. I think that there is, there are a lot of opportunities here in Denver and there are opportunities here in Southeast Denver. We have, how many? Four? I count it as six because I count the Dahlia Light Rail Station as well. But, we have so many light rail stations and being able to put development close to transportation is a very sustainable way to be able to not only look at housing, but also mobility in our city.
Hi, you talked about the strategies that we need to adopt to support people experiencing homelessness. I'd love to know which strategies you think we need to invest in and if there are any you think we need to divest from.
I think supportive housing is a really important issue. And I think it's inhumane just to have a strategy where we say, campaign is okay. That's not a long-term sustainable strategy. And I think that we need to think about the humanity of people who really do need some additional supportive services, supportive help. That is, I think, a threat and it's so nuanced and it is complex. But, it's also reflective of, you know, Denver's not the only county that is dealing with the issue. We also have other counties. I would, I would like to do more collaboration so that it's not just a Denver strategy, but that we have a regional strategy where we are really addressing homelessness and need more, needing additional public services.
I have a question. City Council last year, I think it was 22 years ago, passed a law that four unrelated people, unrelated family member, unrelated people can live in a single-family home. If that law came up today, where would you be? Would you agree with it? Would you agree with it? They tried to do, I think eight was the original number.
Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, I think about it from the perspective of, I'm a, I'm an executive director of a nonprofit organization. And I will tell you that half of my staff live with a roommate. And we are working on increasing their wages and their benefits, but they would not be able to live in the city if they were not allowed to have a roommate or two or three. So, I think that, you know, the four is very reasonable. We also have housing here in Southeast Denver that allows for that as far as bedrooms and ways that people can cohabitate.
So, you would agree with making it as convenient as it can be regardless of what the neighbors think? Regardless of, you know, four families, four individuals with all their families living in a house? That's okay. If they were your neighbors, would that be okay?
So, I don't, so my understanding is that it is only to be able to have four individuals?
Unrelated people and their families.
Four people and their families.
Yes, and their families.
So, with our housing, if that is our current, if that is what we currently have, I am for it. And I do believe though, that we need to continue conversation within our community so that we increase our housing stock so that that is not the only solution that, that families have to be able to afford a place to live. We need to be able to include, we need to be able to increase our affordable housing stock here in the city. I think it's, it's a solution because we do not have enough housing stock.
I'd like to follow up on my question if I could. So, we have apartments that are going up all over the city, but your kids can't afford it. I mean, the average rent is like, I don't know, $1,500, $2,000. How, is there anything the city can do to force these damn developers to provide affordable housing? How would you suggest that we go about doing that?
Yeah, so there are some measures in place that for new builds, there have to, there are a number of affordable housing percentage that needs to be affordable housing. There is an option there, but it's very costly to the developers to buy out of this. I think it's a start. I think we should be able to increase the number of affordable units. I think our, I think the threshold is like 20, 25% within a unit. But, yeah, my, you know, a 20-year-old and a 24-year-old, they cannot afford with, as they currently are to have their own, to basically get themselves started to be able to do more than rent and to own. That's just one possibility right now.
I've started lobbying city people that CPD needs to tell the developers to stop building studios in one bedrooms that no one can afford to build two, three, and four bedrooms and take rooms. One, they're cheaper to build, and two, they're certainly cheaper to build.
I would ask that that they would be able to have families live as well.
That too.
Yeah, so to your point, kind of have more stock that allows families to live in affordable housing, perhaps it's more than just a neighborhood.
I agree with you, Will, that's wonderful. Because they keep building all these monster buildings and they're expensive. Why don't we start building and encourage these developers to build something not 20%, but 25% they have to have affordable? That's not good enough. And I am faced with a group home, group living or whatever you call it in my neighborhood. I'm not very happy with it. I live on a cul-de-sac and I have cars, all over. How many cars are, if you're gonna have four unrelated people living in one single-family home, look at the cars you're gonna have parking on the street. That's a real problem. It's, and it's dangerous too, having all this traffic on my cul-de-sac. It's not good. I am not for it, so I would not go.
The kind of leader I am is, if you bring an issue forward, this is where we get the opportunity to come and have discussion and to figure out a strategy to be able to mitigate it. To be able to address that if there are cars, then what do we do about that? And I don't think that it's all an absolutes. I think that there is a lot of opportunity for us to come together and to, and to decide and to figure out solutions as opposed to saying, nothing can be done. I think that we can.
Cars. They don't look at cars. And that's why I have the chip. And they're parked all. And they couldn't carry anything. They're in the age where they're not very responsible. So, that's all I have.
I, I am the type of leader that would just bring people together to be able to discuss. I don't think that, I think that we have an opportunity as a community to build solutions for Southeast Denver. And I am an optimist and I believe that we can find positive solutions and outcomes because I do believe that people need a place to live and I do believe that you can need to have your parking. And so, how do we come together and find a solution? And I don't know if I have it, but I think by listening and talking and working it through, I believe we can come up with some good solutions.
Let's let Tony go, let him ask questions above.
Oh, that's an idea. Is that, is that good for you?
Oh, yeah, sure. For Tony, it's okay. Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Did we just, did I just not turn it on? My goodness.
It was on. Diana, it was on.
Oh. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all can hear me okay. My name is Tony Pickford. I'm a candidate for Denver City Council District 4. I hope to get your support and the ability to represent Southeast Denver on, on the city council. I almost said student council. I did run for student council three successful times, by the way, but that has nothing to do with why we're here. I'd like to start by thanking the Hutchinson Hills and Willow Point Registered Neighborhood Association for having this event. Thank you so much. These are the types of events that we need happening regularly. This is true civic engagement and these types of interactions with neighbors is how we're gonna change the city of Denver and put it on a trajectory where we're not having some of the issues that we've been talking about. A little bit about me. I'm a fourth-generation Denverite, a third-generation product of Denver Public Schools. I learned to play youth basketball at the gym here at Samuel's and I attended Southmore Elementary School. I too am a product of Thomas Jefferson, just like Diana. And I also want to thank you for running, Diana. It takes a lot of courage to run and I encourage other folks to run for public office. I graduated from Thomas Jefferson High School. I also went back to TJ and coached varsity high school basketball for four years. And that was a way that I found really rewarding to give back to my community and also mentor young men from Southeast Denver. And that's where I got the bug for youth leadership development and education. My professional career, the first half, was spent in the for-profit sector. I've always taken sort of a non-traditional path, so I had a really rich experience in the corporate sector. I worked with some small business startups. The work that was the most rewarding was in the, in the software sector where the company that I worked for processed workers' comp claims for federal employees. The largest group of federal employees that we processed workers' comp claims for were postal workers. And so that was really rewarding to be sure our United States postal workers were able to have their workers' comp's claims processed. The last half of my career, over 15 years, has been spent in youth leadership development and education. I was the founding dean of students at an all-boys public school where I was responsible for discipline and school culture. That was really rewarding work for me because as we look at what's happened with the Me Too movement and all the sexual assault and awful things that women go through in our society, part of the reason I opened the boys' school was to address how we socialize our boys. That toxic masculinity that boys learn at a very young age. Those are the boys that go through our educational system and they have more instances engaging with the police. They drop out at higher rates. Their test scores aren't as high. And then they grow up to be the physical and emotional abusers. And if you look at our school shooters, one thing that's unique about them is they're all boys and men. And so that work, opening the boys' school, was very important to me. I was a student voice and leadership coordinator in Denver Public Schools as well. A colleague and I ran a leadership development program that lasted 11 months. It reached 22 different DPS high schools, including Thomas Jefferson, which is my alma mater. And that was really rewarding work. I currently work at Place Bridge Academy in a part-time position as a paraprofessional, just outside of District 4. Place Bridge is right over by Cook Park. And I work with a lot of newcomer and immigrant students, helping them with English, math, social and emotional development. That work is really rewarding. I'm married. My wife and I live over by Bible Park. Feel free to pick up a piece of the literature. That's my wife and dogs and our baby Wells. We live in the house that my wife grew up in. We bought that house because her parents lived there for 39 years. They were able to transition into a condo that was more manageable for the needs that they had. But, it's really special for me and it's personal while I'm running, you know, in the house that my wife grew up in. Our baby Wells is in the same room in the nursery my wife was in. And so it's really important to me and that as future generations, Wells is friends and hopefully someday grandkids of mine will experience a Southeast Denver that I experienced, a very rich and vibrant time for sure. Let me talk a little bit about my family legacy because it's, really frames everything that I do in my life. A fourth-generation Denverite, I come from a long line of educators, motivational planners, and social justice champions. My great-grandfather started a small business in 1901 at 2636 Woburn Street down in Five Quads. The purpose of that business was to allow people in his community to gain access to capital to buy property. Over 120 years later, one of the reasons I'm running is to be sure we address our housing and equity issue. And then teachers, nurses, people from the middle class have the opportunity to buy property in Southeast Denver. My grandmother dedicated her life to Denver's children and there's a school named after her in Green Valley Ranch. Florida Pitt Waller, K through 8 school, is named after my grandmother. So, a lot of the work that I do in education is because of the strong line of educators that come online to turn aside in particular. My mother was an educator. It was nice to talk to someone tonight who my mother taught back in the day here in Southeast Denver. She dedicated her life to Denver's children. She was a pioneer in multicultural education. And she was the one who gave me the first experience to unions because when the teacher struck when I was a little boy, I ended up on the picket line with my mom, which was a fascinating experience. So, I have a lot of commitment to education and I believe that youth aren't the leaders of tomorrow, they're the leaders of today. My father was a small business owner. He ran a company called The Door Company, sales, service, and installation of commercial and residential doors. And it's big, he employed 18 folks. It was watching my dad run a small business for almost 20 years when I realized that small businesses are truly the lifeblood of the economy. I watched my dad employ some people who others wouldn't, people who just got out of jail or people who were having trouble with jobs or people who had addiction or alcohol abuse. My dad had a good people, second and third chances through his business. And our company parties were more like family and that was a really unique experience and frames how I look at small businesses. My wife's an educator. She's been a teacher in Denver Public Schools for 16 years and a union member. To watch primarily women during the Denver Public School strike, do you all remember when they had the strike recently and all the teachers were out on the picket lines? Mostly very hard-working women that led those strikes. My wife was a strike captain and it was really inspiring to watch her lead her teachers on, on that strike. Let me talk a little bit about what makes me unique as a candidate. I've been very involved in city politics for many years. I was one of five people to start three successful ballot initiatives. I'm sure you all are aware of what it takes to create ballot initiatives. When five citizens have to get together and say, hey, we're gonna create change. There's city ordinances we want to implement that our city council isn't implementing. So, I've been involved in three ballot initiatives that landed on the ballot and they all won every precinct in District 4, all three of them. They were around campaign finance reform. Another initiative was around government accountability and transparency. And then the third initiative was around protecting our most finite and valuable resource, which is green Woburn space. I'd be happy to talk to you about those ballot initiatives. One of them was unique in that city council referred that ballot initiative. So, I have experience working with other city council members to get legislation passed. And that was the campaign finance reform initiative. City council referred it, helped us get it on the ballot, and this is the first election cycle that we've got campaign finance reform in Denver history. I'm running because I think we need bold leaders that will co-government with the community. I truly believe that all politics are local and that if we want truly transformational change, it's gotta start from the grassroots level up. We can have change start from the federal level, but it's not gonna be transformational and it's not gonna last. All politics are definitely local, no matter how complex the issue. Climate change, criminal justice reform, affordable housing, all of those issues can be addressed at the hyper-local level. So, thank you for being here. Thank you for paying attention to city council, Denver Public School Board races, and city attorney races. Those hyper-local races are where it's at. And I will end by saying that there hasn't been as important as an election that we're about to have in recent Denver history. I hear a lot of people upset about various issues. These issues just didn't pop up out of nowhere. We've been building them. This is the first time in 12 years we have an opportunity to elect the new mayor. We've got five open council seats. I can't remember a time in recent memory where you all, Denver voters, have the power to elect leaders that possess particular values and a skill set, skill set, excuse me, to keep this city moving on an upward trajectory. So, Pete, I know you're paying attention to the District 4 race, you're also paying attention to the mayor's race, right? You're paying attention to the at-large races because you all have votes in all those races. But, please reach out to your friends, your family, your business owners across the city because again, there's five open council seats. We need seven city council members alive to pass a legislation. And if we got nine city council members alive, we could even override a mayor veto. So, if you like checks and balances in your local government, this is your chance. So, I encourage you to continue to be civically engaged. Please reach out to me, my flyers are here, my campaign manager, Danny Gallagher, please raise your hand, he's in the, in the back there. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If there's any questions that I don't know the answer to, myself and Danny will be sure to get back to you right away. You can go to pickfordforddenver.com to learn more about our campaign. We need volunteers, we need contributions, and more importantly, we need people like you who are engaged and plugged in and inspired to shape Denver the way we'd like to shape. So, thank you for your time. I will stop there and address any questions that you all have.
Let's ask some questions from Tony.
I need to ask you the same questions we, we asked Diana because I put her on the spot. Now, we're gonna put you on the spot. How do you feel about both of us and Diana about four people being able to live in a single-family home? That are not related?
I think it's a byproduct of the mismanagement of our city. The growth and everything that you all have talked about, we've been building the wrong product for the, the wrong folks. There was an article today that came out that said Denver was the worst city in the country to raise a family. Why? Because we've been creating luxury apartments, really expensive apartments, that are too small to house families. So, my answer to that question, I'm a root cause type of thinker. Unfortunately, we've sort of created a mess. Unaffordability, we've got, you know, different initiatives being passed where people like you are concerned about folks being crammed into particular houses and lots of cars and traffic, right? I wish I could say that I can snap my fingers and that'll be fixed tomorrow. I think in the meantime, it's important that your community be in touch with each, with each other and be sure that you're communicating with each other and also engaging with the people that are living in that property. I think that there's a lot of fear mongering, especially on next door and other types of devices. The first thing that I encourage anybody to do is reach out to their neighbors, say, hey, have you talked to the folks that are living there? Do you know their names? Do you know what they do for employment? Do you know what gets them going? I think a lot of times we look and we say, those are the, those are the bad folks over there. Those are the dangerous folks. As far as being sure, and again, I want to go back to the importance of this election because if you all elect the mayor, two at-large seats, and ideally me hits your city council spot in District 4, we'll get to root cause solutions and I want to talk a little bit about it. We need to prioritize city's funds towards acquiring affordable housing, hotels, and we also need to adapt commercial spaces. There's lots of commercial spaces that are empty. It's expensive to adapt a commercial space, to make it into residential space, but we've gotta start doing it. We have enough housing already in Denver sitting empty to house everybody and then some in our city. We need to convert vacant land and buildings or underutilized parking lots into mixed-use and affordable housing. And let me back up here, I want to talk about a couple of statistics. And I spoke with one gentleman, so you can't answer, so, and I forgot your name, forgive me, but raise your hand if you think you know how many, what percentage of District 4 and Southeast Denver folks are renters? Any cases?
20%.
I heard 40% in the front. I feel like an option here. Anybody else?
Over half.
Over half over here from Bruce. Anybody else? Fifty-three percent are renters in District Four. So that means forty-seven percent are homeowners. Of those folks, fifty-three percent are renters. One out of two are cost burdened by their rent. One out of two. Homeowners, people who have mortgages, one out of four are cost burdened. I live in a great neighborhood over by Bible Park. I went out my garage, walked down the block, I can count. One out of four houses are paying more than thirty percent of their income towards their mortgage. That's an issue and an indicator that we're headed in the wrong direction. Let's see, what other ways can we address that issue? One thing that I think we really need to focus on, my parents are in their eighties. My dad's eighty-seven and my mom's eighty-five. So we've gone through what's been a nightmare of navigating the healthcare system and also ensuring that they can age gracefully in place. Southeast Denver is really in a transitional stage. You've got a lot of homeowners who have been here for a long time, a lot of which want to stay put. So what do we need to do as a community to be sure our seniors can age gracefully in place? It's a lot less complicated than I think a lot of people think. It starts out with connections neighbor to neighbor. There's studies that have been shown, if you know your neighbors, your elders in your community take less trips to the emergency room. They're able to stay in their homes longer because they have people who will clean a ceiling fan or shovel their ice or clean out their gutters. So in me, you'll have a leader that will start there through just local community connections. But then put policy in place and resources in place to be sure that one of our most cherished resources in our community, which are elders, are able to stay in our community and are valued in our community. The true measure of any community is how our elders and our children are doing. I think that was a too long winded of an answer there, but I'd be happy to take more questions.
Yeah, I have a question for both of you. And that has to do with, and because both of you have nothing to do with open space. How do we retain and bring more open space for Denver? We talked about, you heard the words that the ones who have thirty percent are the big open space, green space. And that everyone in Denver should be within a ten minute walk of the park. How are we going to do that in Denver, Denver's not locked?
Do you care if it goes first, Diana?
Here it's a line, go ahead.
That's a great question and thank you, and thank you for the work that you do with the League of Women Voters. I appreciate that work immensely. Shout out to the League of Women Voters if that wasn't very obvious. How do you increase parks and open space when we're landlocked? And land is the most finite and valuable resource we've got, right? We can't just make more land. I've been highly involved in what's happening in Park Hill, the Park Hill Golf Course. There will be an initiative on the ballot April fourth that will ask Denver voters if they want to remove a conservation easement that we paid two million dollars for in the Webb administration. Why are you being asked to remove that easement? Because a developer has bought the property, it doesn't own the development rights because Denver voters own the development rights. And you're being asked, you'll be asked to remove that easement. In two thousand and eighteen, we passed a sales tax. It was called two A. It was a point two five percent sales tax that was to go to park maintenance and expansion and acquiring more parks. Let me pull up the data if I've got it. Thirty-eight million since two thousand and eighteen is what we've been bringing in in that fund. We've got over a hundred and forty million in that fund specifically to acquire more park land. Since two thousand and eighteen, we've all been pulling up a point two five percent sales tax. Guess how much, how many acres of parks we acquired?
Three.
Three point two. So again, I'm going to come back to the fact that in the plan for healthier Denver, we talk about our park deficiencies. As more people have come to Denver, the per capita park space has declined, right? Yet we've been taxing and collecting all this money. So please elect a mayor. Please elect two city council members. Please elect me in that District Four spot. So we can go into that pot of money and buy that a hundred and fifty acres in the Park Hill Golf Course and make it a regional park. Because there's a crest of development, a wave of development that is going to crest that will probably be called Rhino East. The amount of development that is coming to that area is immense. And I think that any forward-thinking city with climate change on everyone's doorstep develops green, open space as a last resort, not the first. We've got to develop all the hardscape spaces with infrastructure and utilities and that would be the last option. So it's a very important question. Arguably, it's our planet, the trees are the lungs of our city. And if we don't find a way to protect the open space that we've got and preserve it, we're basically sitting on a tree limb and cutting it off ourselves.
Tony, you're arguing that it should remain, the golf course should remain a park?
No, I don't think it will be answered to remain a golf course.
You've got one hundred acres left as a park with stepped-in development around there.
There's been no environmental study around that development, there's been no traffic study and they haven't done, the planning department has only...
It's under a conservation easement.
Perfect.
It's under a conservation easement.
Right, but I would think that the planning department and anybody who's going to bring in enough residents to basically double the size of Park Hill, that's how many they're going to bring in if that, if they're allowed to build as much as they can build. And there's no guarantee about affordable housing, so the complaint about building the wrong product.
Not at all.
They've talked about twenty-five percent affordable housing connected to a sixty percent AMI, which is that area median income. The area median income in Denver is ninety-two thousand dollars and going up. There's a lot of young folks here for various reasons in sectors making pretty high incomes. And so what I think if that easement is removed, Bruce, and that developer is allowed to do what it wants to do, you're going to see a lot of what you've, not you necessarily in particular, but tonight people are talking about the wrong product, luxury apartments. If that project moves forward, we'll lose the most finite and valuable resource we have, which is open space. And those trees that are the lungs of our city will have more housing inequity and will have more traffic congestion, pollution and environmental plunder. We already identified fifty acres that developers, developers come in and they work with the city and they try and buy up just a lot, lot at a time, property assets. Myself and some volunteers have already identified fifty acres around that transit corridor that are already in motion for development. My guess is twenty years from now, when there's fifty or sixty thousand more people in that area, they're going to want some open space. Something I think about is, I'm not a, I golf, I'm not very good. But what if we had opportunities to develop parking lots and open spaces in southeast Denver? Instead, we decided to take, you know, a bunch of trees and a golf course and we had places to develop that wouldn't require damaging our environment. There's a lot of infill that can still happen. One area that I know is being looked at is the Micro Center Parking Lot. You all are familiar with the Micro Center Parking Lot right here. We've got a huge development on Monaco and Evans, the old Kmart. There's another big development coming in at I twenty-five in Colorado where the, I think it was a Perkins Restaurant and the La Quinta Hotel. Great places to rig infill. If it's the right product and families can live there, it's close to the Largo Station. Thankfully, the Kmart development is going. And one question that I think I saw in your email, Bruce, is what would I do if I were elected? What would I do in the first four years or something along those lines? The first start for me is any good leader picks up on the strong leadership of their predecessor. Kendra Black, Councilwoman Kendra Black has done a lot of great work. Ensuring that we continue the South by Southeast Festival is very important. Ensuring we continue the senior luncheon is extremely important. Ensuring the Kmart development and that development on I twenty-five in Colorado are actually moving forward and completed in a way that they initially started. And so that would be my start. And beyond that is what would be the equivalent of a freshman legislator on council, is I would be building relationships with other council members. Because the dysfunction on city council and the fact that we don't have seven aligned city council members aligned in values about protecting the middle class, ensuring we have affordable housing, being sure our communities are safe. We're going to struggle. That's just, that's just the honest fact. So I will be really working hard to get people tucked into this election so we can get seven council members aligned to pass common sense, data-driven, research-based legislation.
Diana?
You got a question, I forgot what the question was now.
It was about open space and the fact that we're landlocked. What we can do, if you wanted to address that.
Sure, yeah, thank you. So part of, part of looking at where we have, there was, it has been a small percentage. And I do think that we need to increase our parks. There is a park that was purchased with the Denver Land Trust over in North U Hills. And so that is something that is under development now within this district that will increase. I agree with you that, you know, trees are the lungs of a city. I am, I do have, and I would look into maybe some of the details of the vote that will happen with Park Hill and even lifting that easement. My understanding is that it would stay, it's to lift the easement if it's not lifted for the community process or the design that's come forward that the voters of Denver will be doing, that will remain a golf course?
That's a false narrative by the developer. I'd be happy to get you the easement language. It says the easement can be used for ball fields, other recreational uses. Chances are even after we vote in April, it'll go to court unfortunately.
Yeah.
The developer is definitely pushing the narrative that the easement is kept in place, it can only be a golf course, simply not true.
Yeah. I would check the language again because when it comes up to the voters, I think that that's what's going to be confusing. I do respect the fact that there has been a community process. And that's what I think we need to do and maintain. I know that in southeast Denver, I don't want the rest of the city voting on how we are preserving our land and our parks. We have opportunities and as we'll state, there was a lot in there, so that answers that question. But I think that you have, there are opportunities here in southeast Denver. I think working with the developments that are currently underway, especially the Kmart redevelopment, is an opportunity for us to maintain some green space and parks that we have. One of the things that I'm hearing is that the connectivity between our spaces is also an issue. So mobility, it's, you may be at Bible Park, but in order to get to Rosemont Park down here, you have, you know, you have some trails, but how we cross our streets is critically important. And I think that there are so many components that need to be considered that it's not just our green space. It's how we move between those spaces that is also critically important. I'll end there. I'll keep it brief. And I don't know if there was any other question that input had or...
Let's ask some more questions for both of the candidates.
Sorry, I'll be done.
How would each of you go about being a council member? It's an open-ended question.
That's really open-ended.
Do you like the office? Would you keep the office and make a change there? How many aides would you be able to bring in? When would you have hours available for constituents to stop by? I've worked for the last four council members that have out here.
I think there are a few things. Accessibility is critical. You need a council person that's accessible. I have my phone, my contact information, it's my cellphone. My cellphone's open and available and I would like to be able to continue that as a council person. I believe that you need to have hours in an office so that people have something regular that they can go to. Also having town halls, bringing together and coming to the RNO, I mean sorry, RNO, the Neighborhood Association meeting, to be able to hear and have that feedback and constantly change, or constantly respond to the different changes and concerns that are within the neighborhood. There was an environmental study that was our visioning process, I believe about four years ago. I remember putting a lot of feedback in around what Hampton looked like. I think we need to continue that. I think accessibility is key. It is critically important that we look at everything that's happening in the city, that what's going on citywide and downtown. But I really want to focus on southeast Denver. I really think that we need representation that focuses on our community. There are, there are things that we should be able to dream, want and hope for here and come up with our southeast Denver solutions. That is something that I would do as a council person, making sure that that accessibility, continuing with meetings. For staffing, again, I'd have to load half the budget, but you need somebody who's responding to constituents. You need somebody who is constantly responding. I personally, I like the scoop. I like getting my newsletter and knowing what's going on and knowing what meetings are available. I think we need to be able to continue that communication. And I also think that hiring and having people who are from southeast Denver working in that office is critical. You've got to have some stamina and there's a lot of...
Great, thank you for the question. That transition from Councilwoman Black's office to whoever wins this race is extremely important. I'd like to keep the office where it is, it's in a great location, people are familiar with it. I know that Kathy Goss, who's been amazing as a project manager with Kendra Black, unfortunately is going to retire as Kendra Black does. That's unfortunate. I know that Andrew has intentions to stay. So I think keeping a staff member there from the previous city council person is essential. There's a lot of knowledge sharing and so forth that needs to happen to keep that transition smooth. I think being a good leader and elective leader is all about listening. Really, it's rooted in listening and in a constant communication and feedback. I get tired of seeing candidates' campaign and they're knocking on your door during a campaign season and you never see them again. So coffees in the community, consistent office hours, that accessibility is very important. And then I think one thing that I'll do and the way that I'll lead is bringing people who disagree together. And that's extremely important. We live in a very polarizing political space. Pick a side, especially out of COVID. I think people are afraid to come together, they're like, I'm on this side, I stand on this side of the issue, I stand on that side of the issue. And we're not having a deep discourse. So I think that one thing that I'll be really focused on is bringing people together who disagree about most issues, but we can find some common ground. I think most of us want clean air and water and safe neighborhoods and great transportation and affordable housing. I don't think anybody in here can argue that. I'd be surprised. And then the last thing I'll say is, and this kind of came up when you were speaking, Diana, we've done enough research and reports and we've got experts in the community. There's a lot of plans the city of Denver has done that you have paid for with Denver taxpayer dollars that just haven't been implemented. Plans and research are great, but we need solid strategic implementation. And so I wouldn't be coming into office saying we need to do another study without anything. The studies have been done, the experts are in the community, the answers are there, it's about solid implementation. And again, you'll have a leader who will unify city councils as best I can and get seven city council members aligned to pass common sense, data-driven and research-based policy.
A few times people have mentioned like the senior luncheon and I think the senior coffee. I'd love to hear, as someone who's like lucky enough to have my parents watching my kid tonight, just ideas you have for engaging younger people in the neighborhood, whether or not we're called irresponsible. And the fifty percent of renters, right? Because we've got many people who don't know about these events, so I'd just love to hear your thoughts on that.
I think it's always key to understand how people like to be communicated to. And so my outreach to renters and everybody in District Four would start with, how do you like to receive your information? I think for a lot of younger folks, text messaging, social media, things along those lines. I think that the renter community has been overlooked. And so the way that I'll engage younger folks, younger folks with families, younger renters if they will, is actually go to their neighborhoods and have events in their communities and meet them where they are. I'm working right now to engage high school students because when it comes to engaging young... Because when it comes to engaging young folks, like I said earlier, the young folks aren't the leaders of tomorrow, they're the leaders of today. And so there'll be a huge leadership development arm of the council office where we've got young folks in the community implementing ideas like the skate park. That proposed skate park over by Kennedy Golf Course, I don't know if you all heard, all heard about that? That was put forth by middle school students. And so I think those are some of the ways, Elizabeth, that I would engage younger folks for sure. And then also, one way, and I'll let Diana grab the mic, we've got to have those intergenerational connections. When you connect elders and our seniors, the magic that happens there as far as what the young folks learn and the richness of the conversation between the two, and what happens with safety and getting sidewalk shovel and all of that. And so you'll have a leader in me who will really try and bridge those connections between the generations.
Thank you. I love the question, I really do. I spent a good part of my time doing advocacy for children and young people. And one of the things that I have worked on is really engaging those who are informal caregivers, family, friend, and neighbor care. And I, myself, with my second child, ended up, you know, my sister had a baby, this is how families work, right? Sister had a baby, couldn't find childcare. I'm like, sure, I'll watch her. And, you know, one month turned into three years. And I know what it's like to go to the library or to go to the rec center and not necessarily have resources for somebody who's caring for kids or for somebody who's on their own. I think that there are, I think that we need to be strategic. I love the idea of continuing the senior luncheon, absolutely. But we could do the same thing for young families. I think that we could have community playdates. I think that there are ways that we can engage and be able to build community. If we have not learned one thing over the past three years, right? I don't know if it affected me, I know it affected my family. I recently, my father recently passed away. And I share that because I think it's reflective of how much I feel I have changed and our community has changed and how much there is a need for us to be connected. How much there is a need for us to, to not only communicate with one another, but the value of having and building a community here in Southeast Denver. South by Southeast has been phenomenal. And I think there's, there are more things that we can do. We can't do that in isolation. You know, when you talk about systems, when you talk about a city council, when you talk about, you know, a city system, that isn't an isolation of the Denver Public School System. And oftentimes, those work in silos. And so we need to find those ways that we do not duplicate services and that we are leveraging the power of each system to be more productive, to be and to lean into these hubs of our community. The principal lives down the street from me, and so we often talk about the things that are going on in the school and how we can leverage the community building that's happening here. I know that mental health and the social emotional support of young people, elementary school age children, critically important. I see that in my everyday work. I see that with the parents that are coming through the doors. We provide services for different school districts. But, you know, out of school time programs, people think, oh, that's really, that's really great. Well, we have been a connector for literacy and for that social emotional support. Very few families, or very few people, I should say, have their work end at three o'clock in the afternoon. And being able to have that workforce support after school means so much. Being able to work with principals and school leaders who have a vision for what it means to build a community, that's what we should be leaning into. It's not just our schools, it is our city that needs to lean forward and be able to do those kinds of supports. So I really appreciate your question. And I do think that there are a lot of untapped things that we've done in our community. I'd like to think forward about like, who, so once elected, we could do all of these things. I think that having those communities and round tables and advisors and having that constant communication is what makes us stronger. I said it earlier, and I have a phrase that I like to use, is that collective genius. Going out and talking to people, I'm like, oh my gosh, this is what you do in your professional life, this is amazing. And how do you bring that knowledge to the table so that we are coming up with great ideas? I would not say that I have all the ideas by any means, but I do think that I have the ability to listen and the ability to really help navigate and implement these strategies for building community in Southeast Denver.
All right. Well, thank you. It's eight o'clock, so I think we, no. It's eight o'clock and that's when we need to get on with the lectures and our agenda.